Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, could you please call and roll?
Yes.
Here.
Raynor.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
DeYoung.
Here.
Carl Stolten, pockets or access.
All right, can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
For Brander Horace and Strylan, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Raynor.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. This time we have an opportunity for a public forum. Anyone wishing to address council regarding any agenda item, please step to the microphone, state your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. We've had some, uh, we tried, these are live streamed and taped and everything. Make sure if you come and speak that you get into the microphone so that people can hear, uh, or people listening in line, so. Anyone? Okay, we will move on to the motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Brander Horace, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
DeYoung Strylan.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving into a public hearing regarding a zoning amendment application from Bruce Skibout for property generally located at 218th place. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item to those watching at home on Pella Fiber. And this evening, I'd like to direct your attention to the big board for representation on this item. Tonight's rezoning, uh, today, um, comes to us from Mr. Bruce Skibout. It's for almost a ten acre parcel that's located along 218th place. This yellow highlighted area up here in just to orientate everyone, Washington Street is located right down here. The Walmart Supercenter is located over here. The property is located right along 218th place. Now, as far as the rezoning ordinance is concerned, I would classify this as mainly a tax amendment to the zoning ordinance. And basically what we're doing is we're modifying the condition of the ordinance for the layout of the property. And we're also modifying the design standards on the property as well. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please, and we'll have more details here very soon. And so when we look at this ordinance, it's important to note that the roads, uh, buildings that are closest to the roads right here would continue to have city design standards on the buildings. But as we get further away from Washington Streets, specifically lots three, four, and five, they would include, uh, a little bit more latitude on the design standards for any new buildings here. And they'd have to comply with one minor design element on each of the buildings in the city's design guidelines as well. It is important to note, Mr. Mayor, that the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed this ordinance after March 25th meeting and approved the ordinance as well. And staff is recommending approval this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Uh, written comments?
Only one written comment, and it was in the council packet.
Yeah, there were a bunch of questions. Has anybody responded and answered those questions to the writer of the letter? Jerry, can you fill us in on that, or?
Uh, we did not respond back to the applicant, but, uh, we do have the questions here. He's basically highlighted what I would consider three areas that are highlighted in yellow in the packet. Uh, maintenance facilities under what we call civic or utilities, uh, no different than basically public works as an example of that. He then goes into utilities. All of our zones in the city allow utilities. That means that we put transformers, electric conduits, Pella Fiber Optic, et cetera, on all the parcels that happen to be outside public roadways. So that's something we include in all zones of the city. He then references, uh, vehicle storage. Again, this would be something like a, uh, an impound lot, but it could be, uh, what we could consider it be a chain link fence, twenty-one day storage, or it could be long-term like an RV storage facility. So that would be the example of that. He then goes into light industrial, including dress beef processing plants. Uh, again, that would be something where you take a half a beef and cut it to the respective parts and wrap it. Again, everything that is in a light industrial zone is actually inside a building. That is what differentiates our light industrial from our heavy industrial. Light industrial is all inclusive in a building, nothing outside. Heavy industrial can have stuff outside the building. So that's really the difference between those two. And light industrial is utilized in areas where it is a little more concerned, say next to a retail shopping center or next to a potential residential area. That's why we put light industrial in those type of places. Thank you.
Okay, council, comments, questions? Okay, any, uh, member of the audience want to speak to this, uh, rezoning request? All of the, oh. Sorry.
Bruce Skibout, 760 218th place. Um, I wanna, behind you. I just want to, um, first off, thank you for the opportunity to address you on this issue. Uh, this has been a three and a half year project for me to get this through. About ready to step across, um, home plate, I'm hoping. Um, and through the whole process, I have worked with, uh, Dr. Ken. And, um, I, he's had representation at a lot of, um, planning and zoning meetings, and I think also here concerning this. Um, I, uh, and I've assured him, and he, he has concern about what's gonna happen in the future. I live on that property. I have significant investment in that property, um, both with the building and infrastructure. And so I don't wanna see anything that's not appropriate, if I can put it that way. And I've assured him of that. He's concerned about generations to come. Um, that is a generational building that we have as an office. My son is in it with me. And in the business, we now have a third generation participating in the business. So, I, I just don't see a concern generational-wise coming down the pipe. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. So on the, on the design standard issue, uh, CDC weigh in on that at all, or?
As far as, uh, the condition, Jerry, I, I'll let Jerry answer that question.
This is, this is a good one to answer. Uh, the reason we split out this requirement is because, as you're well aware, we are now on our latest version of the Pella Design Guidelines for the City. When you passed this ordinance, you were on a previous version. Uh, what we did is we made sure that the lots that were closest to Washington would hi, would be obligated to follow the latest design guidelines. And the ones that were passed or passed Bruce's existing building could follow what you guys approved because it was outside where we normally would with CDC. So we just kinda made it a little tighter closer to Washington and let the rules stand in place that you put a minute, uh, three years ago.
Okay, thanks. Okay, all right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Uh, DeYoung, Brander Horace, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number 1049 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by Conditionally Amending the Boundaries of the M1 District to Include the Property Generally Located at Long 218th Place and Directing the Planning and Zoning Director to Note the Ordinance Number and Date of This Change on the Official Zoning Map." This is the first reading. Anything to add, Mike?
No, sir.
All right, can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
And Strylan, Brander Horace, any discussion?
I'd just like to address the future generations concerned. None of us had a crystal ball for that.
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung Strylan.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to a public hearing regarding an application from Pella Preservation Trust to conditionally rezone 906 Independent Street from institutional to two-family residential. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for presentation on this item. As Mayor Ward stated, tonight's request comes to us from the Pella Preservation Trust. And specifically, this is for 906 Independent Street. And what's being requested is a change in zoning from institutional to two-family R2 residential. It is important to note that this is a conditional rezoning request, which means the applicant has agreed to a limitation of the uses that would normally apply in the R2 zoning district. And in this case, the proposal of zoning reserves to use to a single-family home to preserve the historical integrity of the structure. So, and when we talk about the subject property, it's located in this green highlighted area that we have right here and right on Independent Street. And just generally, when we look at this from a staff standpoint, one of the items we always wanna check on any type of rezoning request is the issue of spot zoning. In this particular case, with this being property being zoned institutionally, as you can see, R2 actually advised the property as well in the city zoning code. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as conformity with the city's comprehensive plan, once again, R2 zoning is in close proximity to the, the property. It's also stats believe back in 2014 when the comprehensive plan was adopted, it was simply based the future use land map on how the property was being used at that time when it was owned by Central College was the reason why it was identified for institutional use in the future. So looking at this, it's our opinion that the rezoning request this evening aligns with the city's comprehensive plan. And it is also important to note, Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved this request after August 26th meeting. We are recommending approval this evening, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mike. Any written comments?
No written comments.
Council comments, questions?
Going, going forward, who will have ownership and control of this property? The college?
No, uh, thank you, that's a great question. Actually, Pella Preservation Trust and we have representatives here in the audience to speak about it if you have questions. But they currently own the property. Central College did donate the property to Pella Preservation Trust with the, the process to save it and rehabilitate it. Pella Preservation Trust is going through this process of rezoning it so it can be allowed to be a single-family home, which is not allowed in institutional. And then they will solidify or select a appropriate buyer to rehab the home and move their family into it. And that is the process that I believe is currently being held by, or going through with Pella Preservation Trust. So this is one last step for us, and that's the city to approve this before it can change hands to a new owner for a family.
Thanks, Jerry. Anything else, council? Okay, any member of the audience want to speak to this issue? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. For.
DeYoung, Ben Strylan, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeYoung Strylan.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number 1050 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by Conditionally Amending the Boundaries of the R2 District to Include the Property Generally Located at 906 Independent Street and Directing the Zoning Administrator to Note the Ordinance Number and Date of This Change on the Official Zoning Map." This is the first reading. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
For.
Brander Horace, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Raynor.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
DeYoung Strylan.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to resolution number 6749 entitled, "Resolution Approving Final Plaid of Proverbs 13:22 Edition." Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor Ward stated, um, what's being proposed this evening is a final plaid for Proverbs 13:22. It is important to note that this was the property that was considered for the rezoning ordinance earlier this evening. Once again, the Walmart Supercenter is over here. The plaid that we are considering this evening is the yellow highlighted area. Now, as far as the lots, it's what's being proposed is the property would be split into five buildable lots as well. And as council is aware, the purpose of a final plaid is so the subdivide of the lots can proceed as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the requirements under city code and in compliance with the city's zoning ordinance, it is also important to note that the final plaid needs to comply with the city's preliminary plaid that was approved by council in April, which we believe this plaid is in conformity with that as well. Now finally, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to mention that the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this final plaid at their August 26th meeting, and staff is also recommending approval this evening.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For.
Brander Horace and Strylan, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Raynor.
Yes.
DeYoung Strylan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to resolution number 6750 entitled, "Resolution Approving Preliminary Plaid for Prairie Ridge West." Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as Mayor Ward stated, this evening, we are entertaining a request for preliminary plaid. Anytime you hear the word preliminary plaid, automatically it should resonate, not resonate for those that may not be aware of it. What this is, it's the overall infrastructure plan for development this evening. What we have is a preliminary plaid for Prairie Ridge West. It's almost thirty-nine acres. And what's being proposed by the developer is ninety buildable lots with one commercial lot along with two street outlots as well. Now, just to orientate everyone, Highway G-28 is located right down here. The new five-fill road extension is located up here, and the original Prairie Ridge development is right down, is right here. This continuation of Prairie Ridge is located right over here. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as we mentioned, anytime you hear the word preliminary plaid, what this means is we're looking at the overall infrastructure plan for the development. What the developer is proposing is to extend Highway T-15 into the development. And ultimately, what the long-range plan would be is to ultimately extend T-15 and connect it with West 16th Street, which is the main street that's running through the original Prairie Ridge development as well. Now, based on our analysis, as far as conformity with the city's comprehensive plan, housing is a key priority goal of the comprehensive plan. We believe the plan aligns with the city's comprehensive plan. We also believe that the plan aligns with the city's subdivision code and zoning code as well. We are recommending approval this evening. I would also like to mention that the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved this plaid at their August 26th meeting as well. So with that, that concludes the staff presentations, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For DeYoung, Ben Strylan, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeYoung Strylan.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes. Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number 1043 entitled, "An Ordinance Providing that General Property Taxes Leaved and Collected Each Year on Certain Property Located Within the Epcun Residential Urban Renewal Area in City of Pella, County of Marion, State of Iowa, By and For the Benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Pella, County of Marion, Pella Community School District, and Other Taxing Districts, Be Paid to a Special Fund for Payment of Principal and Interest on Loans, Monies, Advance, Two and Indebtedness Including Bonds Issued or to Be Issued Incurred by the City in Connection with the Epcun Residential Urban Renewal Area of this Phase One Property." This is the second reading. Mike?
I'll try to explain this one, Mr. Mayor.
Hope it's easier than any reading.
Well, we'll certainly, we'll certainly try on that. But anytime you hear the word taxing from a financing ordinance, what's really happening here is this is the city's mechanism. They capture the incremental property valuations that are gonna be built on the property with this. So what we're interested in dealing with developers is the developer comes in, installs infrastructure, donates it back to the city. And in exchange for that, the city reimburses the developers, lots are sold, and houses are built on the property. Now, how we do that is we capture the incremental property valuation. So what this ordinance will do is anything, the taxable valuation that's currently in place on this property, all the taxing entities are gonna continue to receive the base value. But in the event a home is built on that property, we're gonna collect the incremental property taxes on that property and rebate about fifty percent back to the developer over the course of fifteen years. And that's what this ordinance does, is it establishes the form, formal tax increment financing TIF district for the Epcun Urban Renewal Plan. So basically, it's this first phase of the development is where the ordinance has. As additional phases are proposed by the developers, there are likely to be additional TIF ordinances on this property as well. So, and in summary, Mr. Mayor, all we're doing is collecting incremental property valuation. So the new homes that are built on the property, and that will allow us to rebate the developer, back property taxes to reimburse them for the cost of the infrastructure of the developer. So, I believe that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy to answer the questions that council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Move twice for second reading.
DeYoung.
For.
Ben Strylan, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeYoung Strylan.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number 1048 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Mollongrout Parking Rates in the City of Pella, Iowa." This is the second reading. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And as Mayor Ward stated, what's being proposed for the city's parking drive since it's underneath the Mollongrout development is increasing the, uh, parking rates, parking rental rates that we have. It is important to note that the drive currently has eighty-six spaces. And what's being proposed with this ordinance is an increase of the current fifty dollars up to sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents um, monthly effective on January first, two thousand twenty-five. And then once again, that would be the second phase of the rate increase that would go into effect on July first, two thousand twenty-five, which the rate would go from sixty-seven fifty up to eighty-five dollars. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation this evening.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Brander Horace. Butler. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
DeYoung Strylan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes. Motion passed. I get a motion for approval of abstract of bills number 2159.
Going to approve and issue warrants.
For.
Brander Horace and Strylan, any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Raynor.
Yes.
DeYoung Strylan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member have any other business that needs to be addressed this evening? Any member of the public have any other business that needs, you'd like to address council with this evening? If so, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. All right, we will adjourn to a policy and planning to discuss partnership agreement with Central College for shared use of tennis pickleball courts. Mike?
I, yes, Mr. Mayor. And as Mayor Ward stated, what's being proposed this evening, actually, what we're seeking council's input on is proposed partnership with Central College. And this would be a shared use agreement for a proposed Central College's current tennis courts as well as the pickleball courts that they'll be adding to the facility. It is important to note, and maybe a little bit off on this, but I believe there are six tennis courts there right now. And after the renovation that is currently being performed by Central College, there will still be six tennis courts along with lines for twelve pickleball courts as well. Now, as far as the agreement that we have this evening, uh, what's being proposed is a twenty-year agreement. The city, for use of the pickleball courts and tennis courts by the public, would pay Central a one-time fee of three hundred thousand dollars. And Jeanette, as far as the total estimated cost of the project for the renovation?
It'd be six hundred and seventy-five thousand.
All right. So it's a little less than, than half of what's being proposed through our partnership with Central College. And under the terms of the agreement, Central will be responsible for the maintenance, repairs, and improvements. They'd also be responsible for all scheduling of courts as well. And just generally, when you look at this, the facility would be available to the general public, would not be used by Central. And the agreement goes on through the details when that would apply. But we believe there would be considerable amount of public use for the courts. And before proceeding, uh, I think we have a picture of the courts too, Mandy, maybe on the following slide on this. Now, as far as the overall staff perspective on this, we believe that this agreement would address both the city's short-term needs for pickleball courts. And it, it's debatable whether it's long-term or not. I know pickleballs were extremely popular in the community, and there may be a need in the future to add them. But at least from the short-term perspective, we believe that this agreement will go a long ways towards meeting the short-term needs. And the best way to describe it, if it's a long-term priority of the city council, then it will be a long-term priority of, of the city as well. So, with this, now, as far as the city's contribution to the project, what we are proposing for this, this is a placeholder. With the three hundred thousand dollar payment, we would propose to issue a general obligation bond upon the city's share of this. Now, this debt issue, like any debt issue that you issue, has the potential to increase the city's debt service rate in the future on the project. We believe when we originally talked this out, then somewhere right around the five cent increase to the city's tax levy potentially with this agreement. So, in summary, before the city presents this, or staff presents this for formal consideration at council, we'd like to receive council's input and answer any questions that council may have on this proposed partnership.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Comments, questions? I know we had a pretty lengthy discussion about this a few, a couple of months ago, probably.
Yeah, I don't think it's a short-term fix, but a good short-term fix.
I think that, too, the fact that we could have immediate accessibility to this facility is almost contradictory to government because usually the wheels of government turn very slowly, and in this case, it would be quite the opposite, so.
So I know Eric Van Clay is here, and I witnessed a, a lot of work being done. Can you give us a completion date estimate?
Uh, Eric Van Clay, thirteen sixty-one Northwest Drive, and Vice President for Athletics at Central. So I just commend you. Um, I think this is collaboration at its finest of, under budget of what people thought things could be quicker than what people thought it could be shared, which I know is a different concept that most people are used to. Everybody wins in this situation. And so, um, I give Ryan Farrell a ton of credit of leaning into our contractor a little bit. Um, it's a long-term relationship with somebody that he's known for the better part of thirty years. So, they originally looked at starting the project beginning of September. We started three weeks ago, ahead of schedule. Um, please take a look at it out there. Um, it's beautiful. It's awesome. So they, uh, they poured the concrete last Tuesday and Thursday. Um, more details than maybe some people would wanna know, but just perspective, it takes roughly thirty to forty-five days for the concrete to cure. They'll come back mid-October, end of October-ish, weather-dependent, put the playing surface on, and the tennis and pickleball court lines on both of them. So, I'm ecstatic. Um, my, my dream is that, uh, the pickleball players, uh, in this community and our tennis ball players can get a nice late October, uh, week and get a chance to get out there. But, uh, I'm over the moon excited and cannot thank the city council enough for your support. So, thank you. Any questions that I can answer on this?
Just one comment, you know, I've been involved in education or have, you know, went past for a while, and, you know, sometimes personnel change.
Yeah.
And so my only concern is, are we gonna have a, an agreement that the city will continue to have use of the courts as, say, down the road, you know, ten years?
For sure, absolutely.
Because I think that's very important.
Great question. And, and I really, you know, I, when we initially got the user agreement, and, you know, you see twenty years, that's, that's out there, right? Um, I think that's totally appropriate. Um, when we, some people have maybe heard the imagine more concept of Central College the last year, year and a half, of intentionally leaning into those relationships with the community and businesses in ways we never have before. So that's exactly our intent. And we would view this as, once again, a model project of more things that we can assist the community and community members of. So, um, my president regularly reminds me, Central College is the college of Pella. Um, that was started by the, uh, citizens of Pella, and we continue to take that seriously.
Appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it is a twenty, it is a twenty-year agreement, so.
We do hope we outgrow it, though, I will be honest. We do hope we outgrow it, so, thank you.
I, I, excuse me, as I understand, you're gonna make restroom facilities available?
Uh, yes, that's correct. Uh, we did this summer, um, and we continue to, to see expanding on that. So, um, what we did this summer is the Kiper Athletic Facility is relatively closed. So those are indoor restroom facilities, um, that, that we think is a really positive thing. And we're also learning as it, as it goes. So I think as usage continues to increase, we hope to expand some of those amenities. But we really view some, some neat opportunities for hosting, um, tournaments and clinics and leagues for, for all levels um, and really see it continue to expand and grow. One of the, the neatest things I, I saw all summer, and I've, I've repeated this story multiple times, but, um, my son reported for basic duty out at West Point on July first. And shortly before he did that, um, I said, "Just spend some time with your friends, you know, things are gonna go fast. Spend some time with your friends." And on a Tuesday night, he says, four days before he dropped him off in New York, "I'm gonna go play pickleball with my friends," Dad. I, I've not heard those words come out of an eighteen-year-old's mouth, so as a caring parent, you do a flyby. It's called, you do a flyby. And I drove by Caldwell Park, and there were twenty high schoolers sitting at one of the courts. Paul was running kind of the leagues and stuff. Paul was running kind of the leagues and stuff, but the other, I mean, it was, it was Pella at its finest. I couldn't have been any more proud, and I'm like, what a neat moment. So we're glad to pitch in and help where we can. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. So I think we have emphatic support for this project, so we need to get it signed and sealed, delivered as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to item two, project update. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and as Mayor Ward stated, what we wanted to do is provide an update on three projects that we have currently in the current fiscal year budget. That would be the Memorial Building, two fifteen Main Street, and also the Pella Community Center. And specifically, we're at a zero end tonight, is on the planned public uses of these buildings on it. And the reason why we're asking the question about this is if you were to look at the total cost or expected cost of all these projects combined, it's roughly ten million dollars for all the projects. And so our thoughts are, is before we finalize engineering plans for each one of these projects, we at least want to have the discussion, is council supportive of the planned public uses in the buildings? Or is there any questions? For instance, should there instead of be three projects, potentially two projects? And we want to basically answer those bloody questions before would these projects come up for a formal vote on this? And more importantly, the next step for each one of these projects would be additional engineering and probably plant construction on it as well. So with that, as we go through these projects, please feel free to ask away on the individual projects. But let's go ahead, please, Mandy, and I believe that the first one that we have this evening is the Memorial Building. As council is aware, the city has a ten-year agreement with American Legion for use of the facility. It is also important to note that included within that user agreement is the ability to move the veterans groups to a new facility if certain conditions are met, with as far as verputage requirements on their meeting spaces, as well as public parking as well. Now, as far as use of the building outside of the veterans groups, the city does use it occasionally for city meetings that we have, staff meetings on that as well. We use the back parking lot for staff parking as well. In addition, the facility is also rented out about a hundred and sixty times a year. Now, as far as the total project cost that we have included in the budget, this is probably light. We had three hundred thousand dollars budgeted for the current fiscal year for the project. That was based off the two thousand twenty-one estimate. So if we were to go out and update the engineering quotes, it's likely that it's going to be higher. Currently, we're placing on the facility, and that's roughly about a sixty thousand dollar expenditure that we're going to be incurring this year. So our question on the Memorial Building, when we look at public use of the building on it as well, we wanted to make sure before we go through and secure additional engineering and get updated cost estimates on the engineering of the building, that everyone was comfortable with the way the building is currently being used, and we want to proceed with the project. So before I go on to the other two projects, is there any questions on the Memorial Building?
Personally, I hope to put it up for sale, and how marketable it is on that side of the square.
Could you, could you just review a little bit? When, I think the county gave it to the city of Pella, right? When was that?
That would have been in Jeanette, two thousand nineteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, right around, right around that time. And when we originally assumed ownership of the building, the city council at the time, what the plan was, was to actually move the city council chambers to the Memorial Building on that. And our thoughts were with the building, if there's any type of issue with the Memorial Building, since it left right up to City Hall, it quickly becomes City Hall's issues too on it. And so that was the reason why council took over the building back in two thousand nineteen. We also, at that time, formed the agreement, the current agreement with American Legion. And the thoughts were at the council is, if we ever wanted to move City Hall over to the Memorial Building, and at that time, the community center was being talked about as well. The thoughts were, as well, if we did the community center renovation, could it be potentially to move the veterans groups to the community center as well? And that's the background, the way I remember it, Mayor, on that. But subsequently, two thousand nineteen, some of the staffing issues, not staffing issues, capacity issues that we have with staff, we've also acquired two fifteen Main Street since that time as well.
Yeah, so I think it's important that we think about those two properties together, because I think two fifteen Main Street eliminates the need for this for council chambers and whatever else we might do. So to spend three hundred thousand dollars, I'm not sure that's wise use of our money if we're going to renovate the other facility for some of the office space and things that we've talked about. So.
It does seem to me that a lot of the usage here could also go to the community center.
Yeah.
You know, we've got a stage at the community center, there's a stage here, we'll have rooms for meeting sets at the community center. So to put more of the emphasis of the use, that use could go into this building and turn the eye towards the community center seems like the prudent thing to do at this point.
Did they do some work on the roof, so it's not going to deteriorate? Some stopgap measure, right?
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Van Strylen, we're currently in the process of repairing the roof.
Yeah, because I thought I saw some cranes up there.
Yeah, you're correct.
I read about this, yeah.
So, yeah, I think, I think we should, you know, Mark said, "Put it for sale," I don't know. I think we should explore maybe some other uses for it. We need to preserve, you know, it's obviously a historical building, so it needs to be preserved for that purpose, but what goes on inside of it doesn't necessarily have to, could, there may be some other use for that.
Were the veterans addressed in the possibility of moving over to the community center? And if so, how did they feel about it?
We met with a pretty large group of representatives from there about the possibility of moving somewhere else. As you see, line three says the veterans group have expressed a desire to remain. I think a lot of their concern was assess, accessibility. I think with the new, if it ended up being part of the community center, we certainly are going to address accessibility. So I think, I think that there's kind of some unwarranted concern about accessibility there. Because with the, with the new design, the new plan for the elevator lobby and the plaza would be as easy to get somewhere there. So that was, I think that was kind of the key, you know, question they had was accessibility. So I think we, if we want to look at some alternate uses for it, I think we need to make sure and address that, stay with that issue, help assure that if we decide to do something. I don't know that we will, but I think we should explore. Does anybody object or want to?
No.
Okay.
There's a, there's a foundation issue in there, too, I think. I'm not sure about that.
Excuse me?
A foundation issue in the building?
Yes, there's other repairs that will need to take place on this building outside of the roof.
I don't know, I would recommend you guys, if you have, go look at it and go upstairs and just walk through it. There's a big basement, there's upstairs that's used, not used at all, and it needs a lot, there's a lot of work to be done in there. So I'd encourage, if you've got twenty minutes, to go get the key and go look at it.
I, I do like the idea that the veterans would move over to the community center. I feel that the community center is just that. It is going to be a hub, a center for all members of the community to get involved, and it just gives another depth and dimension to that building. And I will go get the keys. Is the basement spooky?
I suppose.
Well, I don't know.
I would have to know what your definition is. I would have to know what your definition of spooky is, because I just, I don't know what it is. I know it's big, I know it's big, and there's a lot of.
It's not as spooky as the community center of Royal Rook.
Oh, and I do find that to be spooky, so I'm good.
Since twenty nineteen, have we put much money into the building? Have we done much to the building?
We've, we've done a few things. We've addressed some, like pointing on the outside of the building. We've done some repairs to the heating and cooling systems, which were relatively new anyway. And we refinished the floors in the building.
Jeanette, do we also pave the parking lot, too?
It's, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I think Danny did that for us.
It's only positive to think, how long are the restrooms open in that building? They probably close by early afternoon.
They're not open unless there's somebody in the building using it that, that thinks they're open.
So they're not open that much, anyway?
They're open on Thursday nights, aren't they, for Thursday night? Just the city hall restroom. Not that, not that. Okay, does that help?
Yes, it does. Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead to two fifteen Main Street. And we're basically at the point where we're ready to see bids on this project on it. Now, as far as the planned uses for two fifteen Main Street, what we're proposing to do is move our planning and zoning department to this building. We'd also have the driver's license stations at this, at this building as well. And the building is a rather large building, it's roughly ten thousand per feet. We'd be using the main floor for this, but it'd be the planning and zoning department, the driver's license station, along with all the planning and zoning boards. And currently, there's five boards, so there'd be city meetings that would be taking place at this building. The top level would actually be cleared out, available for additional space in case we needed to move anybody else down to two fifteen Main Street. So we have a lot of room to grow. And then in the basement, Jerry, I believe all we're planning to do is just storage, correct? So again, rather large building, we're using just the main floor on it, but activities that we have down, we're certainly capable of taking on more activities at this building as well. But you can see, as far as the cost, a lot of this depends, if the elevator is going to need to be replaced in the facility, and so it ranges anywhere from one, one million dollars up to one point five million dollars. Before finalizing bids on the project, receiving bids on the project, we just want to make sure we're all on the same page, planned use for the building.
Wasn't there talk lines of moving personnel into their buildings?
There, there was. What we've done, and kind of, I wouldn't say as far as the opposite, I'm going to preface my comments, we have a great staff, and they've been very patient at City Hall. But when we took on Pella Fiber, we suddenly ran into space issues, and we actually added three CSR positions, as customer service representative positions for additional calls and customers of Pella Fiber. That created space issues at City Hall. And so what the plan is, is if we're able to move our planning and zoning department that's currently in the basement, the city hall, down here, we have the downstairs for payroll and HR and the accounting and financing and accounting department, along with city administration, as well would be in that building, along with utility building. So that's, that's the plan, accounting, city administration, payroll, HR, city hall, planning and zoning, two fifteen Main Street.
Is all our recent flooding, basement's been dry?
Nah.
That's one right there.
Yes, the basement is currently good and dry. The reality is that the building has set vacant and empty, and, you know, it was not monitored, and the cell pumps failed. So the last screen we had two months ago, got into the elevator shaft, and got about a half inch of water in the basement. We pulled the drywall out, and we have planned to fix the parts of the elevator shaft that got ruined by the water. But those cell pumps have been replaced, we're battery backup, so we're good to go.
Yeah, I think we need to get, get moving on it. It's their gift to the city, we need to use it.
All right, thank you.
Is there a specification sheet available on what goes, what kind of stuff we're using in there?
Excuse me?
Specification sheet, what, what materials are we using on different parts of the building? Are we going to have a council room as an elevated dais for us to sit at? Or what is, where do we see all that little detail?
Yeah, we'd be happy to provide a plan layout, but just to be clear, as far as the council chambers, we would not be moving the council chambers down to the building on there. We believe the planning and zoning meetings, about ninety percent of the planning and zoning meetings, Jerry's department and his five boards could take place in the facility. Larger rezoning meetings would probably still need to come to this location as well. But as far as the, the meeting, the groups that have been really dealing with ceiling heights and as much as we use presentations at it, it's not set up well for council chambers. So the council would stay here, the planning and zoning commission boards would go down there, and they currently, all these boards meet in this, in this building as well. So what would happen is the police department actually have additional opportunities to use this room outside of city meetings if we're able to move the planning and zoning department down there.
One other item is that building, if you were to look to the left of it, it also includes the property all the way down the block. So there's future available property for other city assets in the future. So we get property.
Yeah, and just that, this is an excellent question, Mr. Butler. On it, with the building, when we looked at having the council chambers in the building, we thought there was a kind of, we had planned to expand and have a combined building, a new building, to have the council chambers as well. And then, as Jerry mentioned, there's a terrible amount of property down there, and since we have to build on a building in addition to have the council chambers down, we thought that could be a phase two with the project as well.
Well, I'm very happy to stay here.
Okay, anything else?
Okay, the last one that we have this evening is the community center. As council is aware, we've circled, early December is the decision date for both the indoor recreation center and the community center. But before we get to the community center on that, and that really deals with the financial impact of these projects that we're going to be reviewing in December, we wanted to have a conversation on the planned usage of the, of the community center. What we see is the full plan up there on the big board, it's roughly an eight point three million dollar project. And as far as facility uses that we have, what's planned in the building is the main services, offices that are currently located there, art center as well. We'd also be able to conduct additional city program as well as meetings. It is important to note that Crossroads runs the top floor of the building, and Union Street Players has considerable presence in the building as well. And what's being proposed is they would continue to have a presence within the facility. And we'd also like to mention, as the full plan proposes to have the community center gym reopened for non-competitive recreational uses as well. But the big takeaway is when we look at the space in the facility, it's capable of accommodating more city functions in this building as well. And so what the thoughts were is December is going to be finances and financial planning. Before we get to December, we don't want to make sure everyone's comfortable with what is being proposed as uses within the building. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we're looking for comments, and we've already duly noted wanting to explore options for the Memorial Building and potentially relocating veterans groups to the facility as well.
I think this, this latest rendition is a great point. I think the elevator and the posy really add to it. Just got to keep raising money.
Yep, we are.
I just want to add that.
Can you, please?
Oh, I have to get out.
We could probably bring the mic around.
Patty Van Sandy, eleven seventeen Big Rock Park Road, and I'm president and president of the Pella Community Center. I just wanted to point out that as it mentioned in here, is part of our renovation is to renovate the kitchen area and the dining hall, which would be more space, and the kitchen to have it certified, and also have stations so it can be used for cooking lessons, but also for the tulip time vendors and the Christmas name that I can never remember in the Dutch. Okay, the, the Christmas market vendors could be able to use it. It also is a nice meeting space if you need that, along with the auditorium. So on, on bigger meetings and stuff, that'd be available to everyone as well, on top of everything else. And with this renovation, we can have a lot more programming all the way around. Okay?
Okay.
Progress on the gym floor? Is that, you got the work done? We heard about last time?
We're actually working on removing the ceiling first, and once we get done with that, then we'll assess what funds we have available and what we'd say to address the gym floor.
And you're scheduled for October fourteenth, right, to start?
And you're scheduled for October fourteenth, right, to start?
Yeah.
John, they're going to start on October fourteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right. We have some closed sessions, we need to go, three of them, I believe. I assume we'll just do them in here, so that means we got to kick all of you out of here. If you are interested, I don't think there will be any action items coming out of our sessions, but we will check if someone wants to hang around and come back in after we get out of those closed sessions, we'll invite you in.